I'm just. I'm not sure if it was start, if it was recording at all from any of the meetings. I didn't see it.
Well, let me, let me give a quick recap. We have a quorum of myself, Luke Maruziak, Vice Chair Testman, Commissioner Crone and Commissioner Smith. We called the meeting to order, did the roll call, approved the agenda as written, opened the meeting up for public comments, of which there were none. Heard the Council Liaison Report, the primary summary there was that there would be some new appointments and we all wished that Commissioner or Councilmember Johnson well, if he is not, but thankful if he comes back as our liaison. We approved the minutes dated December 4th, 2023. We went to the chair election and said, we're going to go ahead and proceed even though we have a bare quorum. Vice Chair Testman nominated myself to continue as Chair, Chairman Maruziak, and that was accepted. At this point, we were on the nomination for Vice Chair and that's where we are currently. Was all that recorded just now? Was there anything I missed?
That sounds good.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, Chair, also just for your information, Commissioner Lambert joined.
Oh, excellent, excellent. So Commissioner Testament, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination, thank you.
Okay, because what Commissioner Smith said was not an acceptance, but rather nominating you. So at this point, I'd like to ask for a second on a vote for, do we, wait a minute. One more thing, are there any other nominees for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission? Okay, hearing none, can we get a vote on accepting Vice Chair Testman to be maintained as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for 2024? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, a little rocky, but we got through the chair and vice.
Thank you, I appreciate the nomination, but it's good, it's good to have younger blood and not the older blood that I bring, so appreciate it.
You say so.
Thanks.
All right, and since we do have a packed, a couple more agenda items, I do want to move smartly on to the next business agenda item number three, capital facilities and utilities element.
Yes, I'll bring the slide presentation up in a second.
Oh, Martin, I can't hear you if you're talking. Hi there, by the way, I'm Tim Wood, I'm with FCS Group, we're, we're one of the consultants that are helping you on your comprehensive plan. And we're here to talk to you about the, the capital facilities element tonight and Martin, I think you're good now, right?
Yep, yep, Chair for the record, Martin Chaw, Project Manager, FCS Group. Thanks for having both me and Tim here. Tim will go through the presentation and I'll mute myself and jump on if any questions come up.
Right. And yeah, so as Martin said, thank you so much for taking the time to chat with us tonight. We just want to make sure that we're going, going through each step and making sure that the planning commission is on board with our work. So we're here to update you about more work that went into the capital facilities and utilities goals. For the Snoqualmie Master Comprehensive Plan. Tonight, we're just going to brief you on our proposed goals and the alignment of the policies that we've talked about in the past to those goals. So should be pretty quick, just a handful of slides here to kind of get you, get you up to speed on what we've done, so. And of course, we'll be looking for your comments and edits throughout this, this presentation, just so we can make sure we're, we're getting the edits that need to get done, completed. So let's go to the next slide. And this is really the, the key component of what we're here to talk to you tonight about. As you can see here, we've got our five policy objectives and the goals, the kind of, the goal language that animates each one of those objectives. And the idea here is we'll be putting each policy underneath one of these goals or objectives. And, and that's the way that we'll organize the capital facilities plan policies. So you can see here, we've got, we've got these five, I'll go through them really quickly. We've got the objective, which is quality infrastructure. And the goal language that animates that is providing quality infrastructure to serve current and future residents and businesses. The next proposed objective is continuity of public services. And the goal language there is to invest in the timely replacement of aging infrastructure to ensure continuity and delivery of vital public services. The next objective is long-term financial sustainability. The goal language there, providing long-term financial plans by, provide long-term financial plans by identifying resources for the future maintenance, repair and replacement of capital facilities citywide. The next is intra-city and regional coordination, animating goal language there. Provide long-term capital facilities plans that consider and complements land use objectives and capital facility planning efforts and objectives of neighboring jurisdictions. And then finally, protection and preservation of existing city infrastructure. Protect and preserve its significant investment in infrastructure by adequately funding regular and ongoing maintenance needs of critical infrastructure. So that's a summary of, of our, our goal language. A lot of this should look familiar. We've, we've taken a lot of what was already in the comprehensive plan and just kind of updated it in a similar fashion to what we did with our policies that, that we brought before you. And just to give you a sense for where we think these fit in with respect to the policies, we've put together a matrix over the next few slides that just shows you where we think each of those policies lands in terms of the buckets that these different objectives and goals create. So let's move on to the next slide. And I won't get into detail with each one of these, since we've already gone over these policies, but just to give you a sense of where we think these, these, these policies land in each, in each bucket. So with the very first one, adopting a level of service standard to accommodate growth concurrent with development. I think that's a probably an old policy in general, but we think that it, it more or less fits into the quality infrastructure and continuity of public services buckets. The next one down there, seeking grants to fund capital improvements whenever feasible and plan for available funding to support the city shared of planned improvements. That is a, is a home run for the long-term fiscal sustainability goal. So you can see here that, that each of these policies might fit into multiple, but, but is largely under one of these, these goals and objectives. So you can see here, each, each one of the policies that, that we've put together already, so let's go to the next slide. And we'll go and just, just detail a couple more of these, so. The, the very. The, the third from the top there, if the city is selected as a state or regional capital facility site or otherwise impacted by such a facility, ensure appropriate mitigation for local impacts is provided. So that we feel falls under the quality infrastructure and the intercity and regional coordination component. We feel like that's pretty obvious, but it, but it is an important thing to emphasize, just because these facilities are obviously going to be happening in the region as time goes on. And to the extent that the city gets cited for that kind of infrastructure as the region grows. We, we want to make sure that this is a comprehensive plan goal and policy that we can look back on and we can say this checks multiple of those goals. And so process through that is, is pretty important. And, and again, just keep city staff on, on a front that would, that would engage with neighboring jurisdictions and the county and the regional council as well. The next policy there is another good example of, of one that kind of straddles two lines. Coordinating with neighboring jurisdictions on infrastructure projects that cross city boundaries and planning, development and design. So again, with that regionally significant infrastructure component, you want, you want to make sure that you're, you're holding fast to your quality infrastructure goal while also looking at long-term financial sustainability with that policy. So we can skip to the next slide. And this one, I think, is, is pretty well loaded with a lot of different policies. So I won't, I won't go into detail with, with all of these again, but you, you can see where each of these lands. And we'll just skip on to the next one too, so I don't take up too much of your agenda time this evening. But you get the idea of, of where these goals fit into the larger process. Let's go back to the, to the slide that has the goal and, and an objective language. At this point, I'm curious if there's any input from the planning commission. Folks that see any wording or, or otherwise that might be out of place here.
This was a pretty good summary, but let me pull the commissioners and just see if there's any additional comment, Vice Chair Testament?
No, I don't think so.
Commissioner Crone?
No, I just wanted to note that I really like this, this layout and how you've described the each goal to the categories, I think it's really helpful and clarifies things as we before, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Agreed. Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, nope.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I think the, the placements, they seem logical and, and, and fit together nicely, it's like, good job on that.
Right, thank you.
Okay, no, I think, I think you've got a good summary here, let's.
Great, well, sorry, go ahead.
Let's check mark these and move on.
Okay, great, well, with that, thank you so much for your time this evening and, and all of the, the great input. Emily, do you feel like there is, is anything needed at this point, or Martin? Put a cap on this?
I think.
Nice work, Tim. Oh, go ahead, Emily, please.
Oh, you go ahead.
So nice work, Tim, Mr. Chair, I think we're, we're looking for a confirmation feedback, so thanks for your, thanks for reviewing this and giving us the thumbs up. On the next four slides, you know, over the next several days, if you have changes to the alignment of the different policies to the individual goals, let us know. We'll be happy to, to refine those, finalize those with, with Emily, thank you.
Thank you, it was good work.
Emily, anything for the good of the order?
No, thanks, guys did a great job, thank you.
Okay, great, well, thank you all, we'll be talking to you soon, I'm sure.
Okay. Very good, now let's move on to gen item four, the environment.
Well, good evening, Planning Commissioners, I'm Carla Bowden and I'm with Partite Consulting, another one of your consultants, assisting your planning department staff on the development of your 2024 comprehensive plan update. Here tonight to present the first set of policies for your environmental element. You recall, I think at your December 4th meeting, we did the introduction to the environment, and so this evening we'll be introducing policies for two of the topic areas. We can go to the next slide. So tonight will be policies under the environmental protection and the climate planning and resiliency topic areas. And then at your February 5th meeting, we'll finish it out with the water resource aquifer critical area topic. The Snoqualmie River stream corridors and wetlands, geologic and flood hazard areas, and then the goals. And I did note your guys' comments on how FCS organized the goals and policies in that table, and I noted that too. I thought that was a really nice way to do that, so I'll make sure I try, I do that for our next meeting as well. So you can see how the policies fit under the proposed goals. Okay, so we can, Mr. Chair, I assume it will be as we've done in the past where I will read each policy and do you want to do by slide as we have in the past? We would like to go by policy by policy.
Let's, let's do it by slide.
Okay, fantastic. So again, we're starting off under the environmental protection topic. And this slide, we have three policies, one of which has been highlighted as a Vision 2050 policy, so the first one is incorporate and utilize applicable best available science for purposes of designating and protecting all regulated critical areas and Andromeda's fisheries that need special consideration for their conservation and protection. Policy number two protects Snoqualmie's environmental critical areas, habitat and the natural environment through land use plans, surface water management plans and programs, comprehensive parks plans, development regulations and site-specific project review. And the last one on the slide, ensure the protection and recovery of ecosystems to provide healthy habitat and support fish, wildlife and plant populations in a changing climate.
Okay, I've got two questions, but others may, let me do a quick poll. Vice Chair Testament?
No questions online.
Okay. Mr. Crone?
No questions.
Mr. Lambert?
No questions.
Mr. Smith?
No questions yet.
Okay, I did two, one was Anadrama, Anadramas, what is the definition of that word?
They're salmon and steelhead.
Salmon and steelhead?
Yes, yes, this is the state legislature, a number of years ago pulled out these fisheries as needing special protection and consideration when you consider your critical areas update. So that's, it's protecting the steelhead and, and addition, you know, just special consideration for salmon.
When it comes to the city of Snoqualmie and the fact that the salmon can't get above the falls, does that apply, salmon and steelhead?
Well, it'll be something that you'd evaluate during your critical area ordinance update. If you don't have salmon in any of your streams, then you know, the notation is, is that this is just the generalized policy that they want to, that Commerce, actually Department, Washington State Department of Commerce wants to see.
Yeah, that'd be a monster salmon that could jump by the falls.
Right.
So.
I think it also.
Yeah.
As I say, it also includes the watersheds that affect those, so even if they don't get above the falls, we would affect every, all the water below the falls and then also the tolk, etc., from the backside of the, the development up there on the ridge.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's not the tolk, it's the. Sorry, I can't remember the, the river down there in Fall City.
But you're exactly right, it's all the, your watershed and all, and even tributaries, so.
And then my second question was, on the third bullet, you've got share protection and recovery of ecosystems. Is that motherhood apple pie, or is there a specific area targeted for recovery at this point?
The. I, I don't believe Emily could speak to that, if there is a specific area that's been identified by the city for restoration and recovery plans. This policy is broad enough that it can happen at some point in the future. It could also happen as part of mitigation plans from project, development projects or or even volunteer efforts, conservation efforts. So it is taking that next step from that your development regulations are going to do the protection. And the recovery is, is a separate active step that happens through enhancement. And like you said, it's a separate action that doesn't come out of a regulatory scheme, but more from a, a a planned effort by the city, a nonprofit organization.
Okay, I just wondered if there was, you know, something specific, like a whole line on the golf course needed something, or, but, okay.
Nothing specific, no, Chair, it is, right now, the city is doing this ecosystem recovery, even just through the YR7 watershed. And we, we take forward to help maintain the watershed.
Okay, good, let's move on, next slide.
Or again, continuing under environmental protection, coordinate with governmental agencies, nonprofit organizations and tribes to protect and enhance the environment through countywide and watershed planning, fish and wildlife resource management and habitat protection networks across jurisdictional boundaries. Establish and maintain relations with Native American tribes for the preservation of archaeological sites and traditional cultural properties that are vulnerable to climate impacts. Actively manage city forest lands to decrease climate exasperated, sorry, risks from severe wildfires, protect residents and improve ecosystem health and habitat and encourage others to do so.
Okay, still I'm going to do the poll, just so we don't miss anybody, Vice Chair Testament, any comments on this slide?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Crone?
Nope, no comments.
Mr. Lambert?
Uh, no comments.
Commissioner Smith?
No, no, no comments, but I like the addition of the wildfire language here.
Agreed, agreed, likewise, I have no, no comments at this point. Next slide.
Okay. Control, again, continuing with environmental protection, control the spread of noxious weeds as identified by King County Noxious Weed Control Board from public properties, particularly in more fire-prone areas like roadsides and utility corridors. And if possible, educate citizens about the control of noxious weeds on private property. Next two are from Vision 2050 recommendations, support integrated and interdisciplinary approaches for environmental planning and assessment and promote innovative and environmentally sensitive practices in site planning, design, material selection, construction and maintenance.
Okay, same procedure, Vice Chair Testament, any comment?
I've never, never supported noxious weeds, so I'm, I'm glad to see that there.
All right. Commissioner Crone?
I'm with the Vice Chair, I'm not a fan of noxious weeds, but otherwise, no, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Mr. Smith?
Good comments, I can get, do any of these, are there any that? What's coordination like with like the, the ROA, for example, on some of these policies where maybe that, you know, it might be outside of their jurisdiction to control like noxious weeds, for example, how, how do we work together with them in that regard?
I'm not sure, Emily, sorry.
We, we do have a good relationship with the ROA and the, and the city's policies and regulations take precedence over the pathways. So they, they need to be informed about what the city's laws and regulations are in addition to whatever their own CCNRs say. And we do, we do have a close collaborative relationship with them, so I'm just projecting that into the future.
And what I heard Emily was, the ROA is bound, if we say these noxious weeds are banned for being on private property, the ROA is bound to follow that.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Good, good, anything else, like Commissioner Smith?
No, that's, that's helpful, I mean, obviously, you're talking about potential future policy or actions, but we're just kind of curious, and I wasn't, wasn't certain about that, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it was a good question. Okay, I have no, nothing further to add, next slide.
Okay, so this is the last two policies under the environmental protection topic. Encourage environmental stewardship on private and public lands through partnerships and voluntary efforts that protect, restore and enhance the quality and functions of critical areas and associated buffers. And support programs that ensure all residents, regardless of race, social or economic status, have clean air, clean, clean air, clear water and other elements of a healthy environment and prioritize the reduction of impacts to vulnerable populations that have been disproportionately affected by climate change.
Okay, again, I'll do the round robin, Vice Chair Testman?
No, no questions.
Mr. Crone?
Just a quick question on Vision 2050 language, can you refresh my memory, this is, is this a copy and paste from the Vision 2050, or is this a paraphrasing of that? I just, I just don't quite remember.
It's a paraphrasing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, otherwise, no, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
No questions.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing here, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, I don't want to go down a rathole, but I do want to ask the question. We talked about coordination with the tribe on previous slides. Are tribes members like of the Snoqualmie Casino and what, are they considered Snoqualmie residents?
I missed, go ahead, Emily, I'm, I'm assuming if they're tribal members that live within the city limits, they're city residents.
Correct.
And their property, the tribe is property owners and, and a business. Did I, did I get?
Yeah, the, the Salish Lodge is inside the city limits and they own the Salish Lodge.
There certainly the tribal lands are, you know, the sovereign nation, and so it's not, I, I don't, I, I might be speaking a little, I'm not sure exactly how the land is oriented within the city limits.
Okay.
But their land is their sovereign nation, and so I don't necessarily know if that is considered city limits, it is their nation.
Okay. Maybe some clarification, it, it sounds like if they live in the city limits, or say they deal with the Salish or whatnot, as they manage that, they'd be considered a resident. If they're in the, basically the reservation land, which is around the casino, then, and they live there, then they would not be considered residents. That's, that's kind of what I heard, but maybe we confirm that.
Yeah, residents is you own a home and you, you, you know, you own or live, you know, inside the city limits, you know, that, that. That's all residence means.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, I think that, Mr. Chair, that's my understanding, if it's on the reservation, they're on the reserve, you know, they're on the tribal land, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, next slide.
So we're going to move now to climate planning and resiliency policies. Before I do that, I just want to preface a review of this, that the, your planning director is planning to develop a climate, a climate planning element for the comprehensive plan, and if, if, if time and resources allow. And so if that does happen at some point this year, these policies will then get moved out of the environment element and into that climate planning and resiliency cha, um, chapter or element of the comprehensive plan. But we, Emily and I chatted about it, and since they were already done, we thought we'd go ahead and bring it forward to the planning commission for your review now and comment. And, and then that way, again, if, if time and resources allow for a climate planning element, then we'll have these, these policies would move into that, into that section. So any, do you have any questions on how that might unfold? Okay. Alrighty, well then we'll go ahead, we do have, we do have a bulk of climate planning policies. And that's primarily because, and I think you're aware of it, that two things, because of two things. One, Vision 2050 from PSRC has a considerable amount of effort and policy direction regarding actions necessary in order to reduce greenhouse gases and, and, and improve communities' resiliency. And then, as you, I think, all know as well, the state legislature passed House Bill 1181, which now requires a climate planning and resiliency element in all GMA planning jurisdictions. And so there is a bit of work that was done in regards to. And so there is a bit of work that was done in regards to that, so. Go ahead and get started here, um, the, with our first slide. Consider opportunities to address community greenhouse gas emissions reductions by 2050. Develop and implement a climate action plan that includes greenhouse gas emission programs. Such as incorporating greenhouse gas assessments and CIPA review, carbon storage in urban forest. And the impacts of climate change on the city's hydrological systems. And encourage lot layout and site design that allows for houses and other buildings. To be oriented to optimize passive and active solar access and minimize shade on adjoining properties.
Okay, um, again, I'll, uh, poll the commissioners, vice chair testment, any comment?
Uh, one, so just to refine, uh. Uh, is this, is this aspirational or are we committing here to, to developing policy because? Uh, particularly when I look at the second bullet. You know, if we're committing that, that's a lot that we're undertaking, you know, in my case, I support it. It makes sense to me. Um, but I'm, I'm just curious, like, if, if we say, yeah, this language is good. Are we committing the city of Snoqualmie to carrying through and, and, or coming through with a, with a, with an accounting and, and so on?
Well, um. That policy is relatively directive. It was a recommendation of, um. Emily, I have to apologize. I forgot the, the group that provided review and recommendations on the climate. Regarding climate changing, but it was the. Thank you. And they were a consultant firm that was assisting King County in reviewing. Po- existing policies for, um, for climate. And with the filter of how to be proactive and, and how to respond to the, the, the climate. Planning, um, you know, efforts under vision 2015, the state legislature, so. I will say that I, I did note that policy as well. Um, it is directive. So, I mean, it is committing the city to, to at least developing and considering. How to addressing greenhouse gas emissions through your, um, through those actions identified in the policy.
It is, it is a strong, um, directive and, and normally. I, I wouldn't see such strong directives like this, like a programmatic type of. Policy.
Right.
Um, that being said, the, the commission can go ahead and. Soften it, so it allows for additional work to be done, but doesn't commit the commission to completing an action plan.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I was going to, I did round table, but. Um, just to add a comment. Most of the Snoqualmie Ridge is relatively new. Right? New builds. So I'm curious, how far off are we? I mean, how much greenhouse gas emission reduction? Would are relatively newly built and some of it was built, you know, like the last three, four years, so like 15 years ago, but relatively, how much of that? Um, how much reduction is required from that new build? Are we not close to the greenhouse emission reductions or do we got to cut it by?
I, that's the thing. We're committing to an accounting because we have no, I'm assuming we have zero idea. You know, I, I, I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, do, do we even have like bent, you know, baseline?
Right.
Established, you're right, that would be part of the climate action plan.
Right, and it, so that's part of the climate work that would go into your element that. You know, again, if time and resources allow, so you do establish a baseline. Uh, the, the Washington State Department of Commerce actually just released today their climate element guidance. Are their full guidance, so that would be what jurisdictions are going to look at. That they're gonna, they have a whole section there on how do you establish your baseline and how you determine what your greenhouse gas emission, uh, target is. So we don't know those answers yet.
Yeah, that, this policy was drafted many weeks ago. Much in advance of the Commerce's guidance.
Okay, well, there was one, um, action that said normalize it to like, you know, 1995. Uh, you know, greenhouse gas emissions, which make no sense in a city where most of our builds happened after that time. So it has to be, the, the baseline is very important. However, we set that baseline from which to say, okay, now we want to get better, right?
Right, although I think at this point, the state of Washington and PSRC has established what that year is. That you want to go back to. Again, I don't know what that means. For, you know, for Snoqualmie, but those, those baselines have been established.
Councilmember Johnson, you want to give some light to this?
Uh, only in that, uh, the, there are kind of a couple ways to, to interpret, um, some of this in that. Uh, some of these suggestions are more specific than it would have, uh, originally considered. Which is both a good thing and that it's not just hand waving like, oh, we're gonna do some sort of a climate action plan thingy. And then not really doing anything, um, but on the flip side, it becomes, well, how? Um, why these specific things? Because I could think of a lot of different, uh, climate related things we could do, like why not having a, a supercharging station? Uh, in Snoqualmie, uh, you know, with the, you know, some nearby retail, so the folks who are sitting around for 20 minutes. Half an hour charging up their cars can spend a little money in the city. But anyway, the bigger thing being the, um, the charging station for, um, uh, for electric vehicles, you know, just like. That's another specific thing that's not on the list. Maybe it's, it's on another slide or something, but, um, anyway, just point being that. Uh, there's kind of a balancing act between being specific and, uh, you know, making things actionable while. Also, we could end up in the weeds somewhere with a bunch of very specific things. Um, so I guess a question would be, are there other slides that have other specific things, uh, like, you know, the, the lot design? That's, that's a very specific thing, um, which is great, um. But just, you know, if, if this is the list, why these things? And if we want to go that specific, do you want to add in a bunch of other ideas at this, at this point?
Um, just to, Chairman, just to add in one more comment about this one. This particular. Action related item could be. Moved to. The implementation chapter of the draft comprehensive plan. As we begin to assemble what, you know, what action items are going to result, you know, from these policies. This could be one of them.
True, true. Uh, there, there's definitely a lot of, a lot of interest here. Um, vice chair testment?
Well, uh, actually council member Johnson, this kind of ties to his last point a- as well as something that Ms. Button brought up, which is. If Commerce just released, it sounds like, uh, a detailed element on, on climate plan and resiliency. And this was prepared before that was released. Do we need to put a pause on reviewing this to enable? Uh, I, I don't know if you've actually reviewed it in its entirety, what was just released. I, I guess what I'm saying is. I'd hate for us to like go through the effort to like approve this when frankly, it might be outdated already. Does that make sense?
That's a good point. That's a good point.
It, it's certainly, you know, the planning commission, preference, the, these, most of these policies were, were suggested by. The, the, um, consulting firm that was, um, you, you know, was used by King County to do an audit. Of, I think, a number of jurisdictions policies. That, and I think they did provide, uh, those comments probably in the fall in September, so certainly reviewing Commerce's guidance. And what they have recommended for policies, these are probably going to be more robust. Than what Commerce is going to provide, but certainly, I mean, Emily, I don't, however you want to proceed is fine with me.
Sounds like we could take some time to look at the Commerce's guidance and come back at the next planning commission meeting with. Some more information and maybe a more informed policy. I don't know if it would. Staff would necessarily change it. It would depend on what we read from Commerce.
Yeah, I mean, at least, I, I agree. Let's take a look at it. Um, because there's so much going on in the state right now. I mean, we're all paying like 50 cents more a gallon of gas this year compared to last. And there's a huge amount of planning and activities going on in the state, so if Commerce a few weeks ago came out with something. Um, I, I think at least we ought to take a look at it and understand it.
Is that in relation to this one policy? Do you want to continue on looking at the rest of the policies?
Uh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind going through, seeing what you have, but, uh, um, and then we can, we can say what, what changed from when Commerce, uh, looking at the Commerce details.
Yeah, I second that.
So, um, actually let me just make sure the other, Commissioner Crone, any, uh, added comments to the discussion?
No, I think it makes sense to pause.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
I'm good with that.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense. It's a lot, there, there's a lot to digest right now.
Yeah. Okay. Do you have further slides on this?
Yeah, we have, um. Five more slides, so I guess it's at the.
Okay, let's just.
The commission, okay.
Let's go through them for familiarization, but again, we, we again want to bounce these against what you find out from Commerce.
Sounds great. So, um, promote information to the public on energy efficiency and conservation awareness programs. Promote energy efficiency and renewable energy sources in municipal buildings that lead to efficiency improvement. Participating in energy efficiency and conservation awareness programs. Support climate protection agreement, the King County City's climate collaboration. And other multi-jurisdictional efforts to address climate change, sea level rise. Ocean acidification and other impacts from changing global conditions.
Wow, that's big. Okay, keep, keep going. Go ahead, go to the next slide.
Implement best management practices to reduce the amount of born particles, or sorry, airborne particles. Within the community to reduce exposure to wildlife, smoke and particulate matter. Strive to convert public owned fleets to zero emissions vehicles such as electric or renewablely produced hydrogen. Partner with local organizations to identify funding sources and opportunities to electrify heavy duty vehicles. In future development, account for climate change impacts when planning, siting, designing and operating capital. Facility, utility and infrastructure projects. And promote development that's recognized under leadership and energy and environmental design. Lead, Built, Green, Sam and Safe and the Living Building Challenge Programs.
Okay.
Reduce landfill solid waste by promoting recyclable and compostable packaging. Commercial composting, recycling of construction related debris and reduction of single use plastics. Cooperate with state, regional and countywide actions that support resilience by identifying and addressing the impacts of climate change. And natural hazards on land, water, infrastructure and health. Protect environmental critical areas and natural resources that sequester and store carbon such as wetland, estuaries, stream buffers. And urban tree canopy.
Okay, wow.
Enhance the city's urban tree canopy to support community resilience. Mitigate urban heat and stormwater runoff. This can be accomplished through tree planting in public areas such as street trees, public parks. Public open spaces and public facilities. Consider programs that create incentives for residents and businesses. To plant trees on private property in addition to any required applicable landscaping standards. Reduce building energy consumption through green building and promote the adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Recognizing the emissions reduction of retaining existing buildings. Assess potential vulnerabilities of the city's infrastructure to climate change impacts. Such as flooding, storm surge, sea level rise and land hazards. Support efforts to increase resilience of public services. Utilities and infrastructure through coordinated planning. Now, this is the last slide. Address rising sea level by planning the siting of hazardous industries and essential public services away from the 500 year floodplain. Advocate and promote to alternatives, um, to single occupancy vehicle, including expansion of transit. Telecommuting, teleworking, car sharing, cycling and walking. To limit or reduce vehicle trips as a strategy for reducing vehicle related air pollution. And reduce vehicle miles traveled and driving alone through land use and transportation strategies. That provide opportunities and access to walking, biking and transit. Support the regional and state efforts to electrify the transportation system.
Is that the last slide?
That is.
Okay, so, so yeah, I think going through the five slides, familiarization is good. Um, and so, yeah, look at what Commerce recently re-released and see what you would change on that. And, and just to comment, that was the first time on any site I've ever seen the 500 year, uh, floodplain, so I assume that's the Cascadian Subduction Zone? Uh, something like that, where you get the big, uh, you know, wall of water coming across, uh.
Yeah, that's from Vision 2050, so that it's possible that you might be right, yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, uh, so, um, yeah, see what? How that dovetail us with what Commerce has recently released and, um, and for the commissioners. This, since this is in our packet, go take a look and, um, kind of maul it over and then we'll have a little bit more of a deep dive. Um, I guess the next meeting? Is that enough time?
Uh, yeah, we, we could kind of gauge that, you know, between now and then, and if, you know, for some reason, if we needed more time, you know, we. You know, we would let you know. And one other, one other option we could do is. You know, if, if the commission just simply isn't ready and there's more, more time that we need, I mean, these policies could be identified to. To further work in, at the time that we do the climate change. Element, so I mean, there's, there's absolutely no commitment that the commission has to take on these policies. They can simply be identified to, to be moved to the climate. Change element and dealt with at a, a future time.
Well, yeah, except for to Vice Chair Testman's comment that, um, we have an environment element that is required in the cop plan. And it'd be nice to make sure that nothing in there is contrary or superseded by the climate action plan, because they are. They are kind of fused at the hip, at least the way I'm viewing it, so.
Well, there's, just to be clear, there's a, a environment element and there's a climate change element, so we haven't talked about the new. Required climate change element, um, it, it's technically not required by this jurisdiction until 2027. And there's a, a desire that the city has to try and include the bodywork with this round of updates. To the comprehensive plan, so. Likely several policies, many policies and many different draft elements of this comprehensive plan will be migrating over to the climate change element.
Okay, but we don't, we don't need to get so deep, Louise. The, the request from the commission is to take a look at what Commerce recently released. And just see if, if you guys who are more, more expert than we are go, wow, that surprises me or, ooh, that's a lot tighter than I thought. Or now we understand something better and to share that with us. That's really what we're asking. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Uh, before, before I move to the next agenda item, uh, just let me do a quick poll. Any, any other comments before we let her go, vice chair testment?
No, thanks for the work on this. Uh, sorry to pile on more.
No, that's okay. I'll work with Emily because we still do have another set of policies and the goals. But they're not as long as what you guys went through tonight, so I'll just work with Emily to see what we want to do for your next meeting. And, um, so, but no problem. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Crone, how about you? Any additional comments?
No, no additional comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
No additional comments.
Commissioner Smith?
No, thank you very, really important stuff and really appreciate the time to, to get it right and go through it, so thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Thank you, Carla. Okay, then let's move into the. Okay, then let's move into the uh, next agenda item, which is items of planning commissioner interest. And uh, I'll do the Ron Robin again, Vice Chair Testman.
Nothing tonight, thanks, Chair.
Okay, um, Commissioner Crowe?
No, nothing else.
Um, Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, nothing for me. Hey, quick apologies. I had technology issues from hell tonight. That's why I bounced off a couple times.
Okay. No, understandable. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, no, and ditto, sorry about, I got disconnected earlier, uh, was commuting home from, from my son's baseball practice on Tuesday night, so uh, apologies, but nothing for items this week.
Okay, um, I have one thing, and it's, it's more of a informational thing. I notice uh, when I look at the local news on Google News, I, I, you know, scan that a couple times a week. It's kind of interesting. Um, they talked about the four-hundred-million-dollar Phase Two expansion of the uh, Snoqualmie Casino. And that number kind of caught my eye. I was like, wow, four-hundred million, that's pretty large. I assume most of it is the hotel. And it, it said that that was Phase Two was underway. I'm just curious, do we have visibility that the all phases of this four-hundred-million-dollar uh, operation going on at the Snoqualmie Casino?
Not that I'm aware of.
Hmm. Hmm. And they, um, they tap into the city's uh, storm water and water and all that uh, uh, wastewater stuff, right?
There's an, uh, there, the, those are under discussion, I believe, and I would need to double check with um, Jeff Hamlin from Parks and Public Works about about what utilities are being utilized and
Okay. I couldn't think of anything um, in the area, you know, Snoqualmie, Northland Falls City, that was four-hundred million. That price tag uh, um, kind of caught me off guard when I read that. So, but anyway, I was, I was very curious. It may be more extensive than I originally thought. Okay. Um, next agenda item is the upcoming schedule, uh, work program?
Hi, everyone. This is tentatively finishing up things that we started last year. And then things that were in the 2024 work program last year got bumped up. Um, so this is just what I have so far. I imagine uh, this is gonna be quite a bit to tackle, and we might have to think about what priority things need to be done in.
Okay, well, the COE Plan is definitely up there. Number one makes sense, uh. Okay. Any comments?
Well, this is Snoqualmie Ridge Mixed Juice Final Plan is underway. It um, began more like, you know, winter 2023.
Right.
We could, we could update that.
Okay. Okay. And then a future agenda list?
Um, with today's discussion, I'm imagining we may have to move out the environment goals and policies another meeting. Um, but other than that, that's what I have so far.
Okay.
Then we'll be, we'll be adding um, a schedule to implement the climate change element, which will be uh, the last one, in addition to, to the work that's been ongoing with Parks and Public Works on the Prose Plan, that's the Park Recreational Open Space Trail Plan.
Okay, good. All right. Um, that is everything on the agenda. Um, uh, let me just ask if you raise your hand, if you have any other comments? Wait a moment. Okay, I see no hands up. At this point, I move that we adjourn the meeting at eight oh six PM on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good night.